And now we are moving to public comment part of this meeting. Do you think that's side of, yeah?
Okay, first I had a question about two hours ago. I may have a suggestion for the board as well. We don't need to hear about the calendar. It's not fair that people came here to make comment and you waited up, waited two hours for public comments. So my suggestion would probably be public comment in the beginning for those who need to leave, public comment at the very end. Okay, so thank you. All right, I'm not saying we disrespect the presenters, they don't want to be here either, but it's unacceptable to make us wait two hours. I have a question for Mr. O'Donnell.
I agree.
Special payments.
Yeah.
People have kids, they came for that.
That was really trying really hard for it, she's trying to not come out. Mr. O'Donnell, um, thank you for clarifying that. We still don't have, um, an answer as to who let them in. But also has San Juan Basin contacted and told specifically that they are no longer allowed on school property to promote this, whatever they're promoting here? Have they been contacted?
I did not contact San Juan Basin.
My other question is, maybe it's just a comment?
Great, you have you signed up for the comment?
No, and I should have. You put me down, Bethany Cole, CO Box 5976.
Okay, so let's, so let's put you down.
Okay, put me down, and I just have one comment. When you're saying that you are on school property...
You don't get to do this.
Well, I waited two hours, we can do this.
We're gonna wait another two hours, so we have a long meeting.
Oh! Wait two more hours, guys, for comments.
I didn't say that.
So, I just have one question. She says she's gonna, she's promoting vaccinations on school property. I'm gonna give you the benefit of the doubt, that it's through a licensed physician promoting these, and are you promoting them as safe and effective? That's what I'd like to know. Thank you, that was my only comment.
That's fine.
You can have it.
Okay, so whether you get to comment at the time, or the end, whatever, school districts all over Colorado do this very differently. Many have public comments at the end, at the end.
Yes, but for two hours, keeping us here for two hours? For putting it at number nine after word discussion?
If you can comment at the end, we can choose that. We move it around at different times, so.
Yes, I don't think it's a great choice. My suggestion would be adding one up front, one at the bottom.
I appreciate your suggestion.
Thank you. Do you see your Zoom background?
We don't have to take public comment. So it's by our discretion that we're taking public comment, and we're trying to listen to people.
You actually do.
We have for months now, and I also know we're gonna get to that now. We have a lot of comments about substitutes, we worked really hard on that. We have a lot of comments on all things related to liars who stayed in person in school. We don't have mask mandates.
But you do on the books.
So those are big things that are going well and are just here. And so we will hear your comments now, we'll read the comments.
I'm gonna read the public comment. The board will now hear public comment. The board hears public comments to learn about the preferences and concerns of our community. Questions asked during public comment that require further investigation may be referred to the superintendent or designee for consideration in later response. The board will not make any comments concerning your remarks. The board welcomes the comments of our community members, but to ensure that everyone will have an opportunity to participate, we have a few ground rules we ask you to follow. Anyone intending to address the board shall sign the speaker's sign-in sheet at the front of the boardroom. Speakers will be called to address the board in the order in which they are listed on the sign-in sheet. Speaker comments are limited to three minutes with a total of thirty minutes for all public comments. Individuals may not yield their allotted time to another speaker. Organized groups speaking on the same topic will be restricted to a total of twelve minutes. To be respectful of everyone's time, we ask that you cover only points not made previously. While we cannot limit individuals' constitutional rights to express themselves, we also remind speakers that you are each responsible for your own speech. The board will listen with respect and asks those who address the board to do the same. In order to respect all persons when addressing the board, we request that the audience addresses issues rather than personnel. Profanity, yelling, fighting words, dictamatory or abusive remarks, or derogatory language are out of order and shall end the speaker's privilege to address the board and may be grounds for removal from the meeting. We thank you in advance for your participation tonight, and we now welcome our first member of the public. The first member of the...
Three minutes is the guideline, because people want to open the question. I'm gonna, three minute timeline, and I'll say, please wrap it up respectfully asking you. Take about ten seconds to finish your talk. Don't go on for another minute.
First speaker is Bethany Jones.
Yep. Hi, I'm Soli Miller Page here right now. I'm sure you guys are seeing me at almost every single board meeting. I will just echo what Bethany Cole said. I have been at county commissioner meetings, I have been at town council meetings, never have I been made to wait two and a half hours to get public comment. I'll just say this, there's parents with small children that came out to comment. This is a school night. I feel like that's completely inappropriate and unacceptable. So you can take that as you wish. In August, I came with great hope and anticipation, as we had enrolled our oldest in high school. I did quite a bit of research before that meeting and found the oath that you all took, that's outlined by the Colorado Senate Bill seventeen dash two nine six, section six and seven, where you all vowed to uphold the Colorado and US Constitution. I heard that again echoed in November at your meeting by you guys. I, at that time in August, vowed that I would do everything I could possibly do to support the school, Dr. Kim, the teachers. I held on to my hope and belief that you guys were doing the best job possible. I really still believe you're trying to do that. In October, the news of the test to stay program came up, I came in and asked about that. In November, I heard you guys reaffirm your oath out loud. In November, because of a COVID outbreak, ninety-nine percent of the high school was sent to remote learning. I came, I came in to ask about that. Also in November, I found out for the first time ever that the schools were severely lacking in subs, another reason I went to remote learning. I practically begged our community, begged you guys to make the community aware at that time, nothing happened. In fact, I was talked over and kicked off your Zoom meeting. In December, I started researching COVID relief funds that Archileta County specifically received, attached to things like masking on buses, remote learning, quarantining. I found it very concerning. In January, my phone started blowing up with distraught elementary parents because school won't promote again. Due to lack of subs, I came in and asked again, what's the plan? I was met later that week with accusations of hurting Dr. Kim's feelings and her resignation. I assure you, having Dr. Kim resign was never the goal, ever. In fact, I was quite disappointed to hear that. We still have unanswered questions. How much funding are you receiving for masking kids on buses? How are you able to legally force bus drivers, who are not licensed medical professionals, to enforce medical procedures on kids? Will bus drivers be held liable if a medical emergency happens to resolve as a result of masking kids on buses? Why is there still nothing on the desk for native subs except a tiny health wanted out in the newspaper? What you propose for single parents that can't keep a job and kids at home when their teacher's out and the class can't attend school? I know this is happening in the elementary. I don't expect you to have all the answers today, but it's now been two years and there's still no great plan of action. I firmly believe that we can do better. Thank you.
Levon Ribada?
Good evening, thank you, oh, I'm so mad. Thank you for making us wait two and a half hours for children. Let me say my comments that I make, this board meeting, as a taxpayer, the resident of Pagosa Springs, and not an employee of Archileta County, not the most tolerant of them. You wanna know how much bus drivers get paid? They get paid five dollars a trip. That's ten bucks a day to put masks on kids. Fauci himself said how worthless they are. Do the research yourself. I'm, I'm done, it is not right. This precious child, his mom stuck his head at the door one day and said, "Please don't put a mask on my child." And I said, "You know what, I'm not, 'cause I'm done. I'm done." And all this stuff made my decision for me tonight. I'm done. I will turn in my keys tomorrow. I will text Lori, I serve God. I'm done with this stuff. I, I am not, thank you, I'm not gonna be party to this any, anymore. I'm not putting masks on kids, and I'm not supporting any more of this. Choose who you serve, and choose wisely. So, have a good night.
Amen.
Ronnie Vaughn?
My name is Ronnie Vaughn. My residence here is in, in four circle. I would like to thank the Providence Medical Association, three thousand. I would like for you to write down two names, of two doctors, please. Dr. Robert Malone, Dr. Peter McCullough. These two doctors, with sixteen thousand other doctors, have been presenting the other side of this shot that has been coerced on our population for the last one year. Dr. Malone is the inventor of the mRNA technology. And Dr. McCullough is a world-known cardiologist. Listen to his words.
Let's pick up on Hasi at all from the CDC, MMWR. They published six weeks of safety data of children ages five to eleven getting the vaccines, and the data were not good at all. They ended up with a hundred serious safety reports, fifteen percent of which had an elevation in trachea. That means there's heart injury occurring in children below age twelve. We previously didn't think this was possible. When we looked at myocarditis before a COVID-19 vaccination, you almost never saw it before puberty. Almost, it basically just didn't happen. A paper by Arolia colleagues from Finland demonstrated that, you know, the explosion in myocarditis is very rare, but if it happens, it happens after puberty. Here with the COVID-19 vaccines, it looks like it's gonna happen in younger children. And then in the Hasi paper, the self-reported data came in from V-Safe, Alex, and reported there systemic reactions were reported in thirty-four percent of the children shot one, forty percent on shot two, and then a negative health impact on the children, ten percent of those is shot one, and fifteen percent is shot two. And that's by Hasi in MMWR. That was just out recently. This does not look good, this is CDC data, and I can tell you, since children of this age have a negligible symptomatic presentation for COVID-19, and it's likely the majority are now COVID-recovered, to actually sustain this type of damage and injury is simply unacceptable.
Sorry to say that the Junior's Heroes Program that we committed into our schools, which was sort of addressed tonight, shows that only one side of this shot is being presented. The students could not even express in opposition to the shot according to the rules.
Your time, your time's up, so do you take about ten seconds to write those in?
And I believe that the program has been standing, this has got to stop. There is another side of this shot, and you are preventing students, parents, teachers, and the public from being educated on this issue, educated. Ninety-nine percent of our youth will survive, ninety-nine point nine percent will survive without the shot. We now know that there are major side effects from this vaccine. Y'all have a responsibility to inform the public, the parents, I am here to help you. These people back here are here to help you.
Thank you.
On a committee to get this word out to the people. Thank you very much.
Rhonda Sledge?
Hi, my name's Rhonda Sledge, I live at forty-eight Calcia Circle. And I've been coming to these meetings for about two years. So let me tell you what I have enjoyed about these meetings, is I love when the teachers bring a few students forward to share with us what they learned in classrooms and what they would learn in outside studies. I love seeing a six-year-old little girl proud of herself and reading in advancement, and the high school kids that came and told us about the readings on the rivers and the lakes for the health of our county. What I really enjoyed at that time, and noted that no student was wearing a mask, and I appreciated that, I really appreciate nobody having a mask on tonight. And congratulations to all the students with all their achievements today. But what concerns me, after so many people speaking about the restrictions on the children that has been and still on the school buses, with, like it's been said, it's over a ninety-nine point nine percent survival rate for the children and the students. And there's been a flood of information from thousands of doctors worldwide, worldwide, but you stay steadfast on a very limited, one-sided information that parallels with the grants that you receive. We didn't always have these grants in the school with, and we made it just fine. The taxpayers, we keep it open to other grants, but all this COVID grant is just amazing. So, like Ronnie Vaughn just said, how many of y'all wrote the two doctors' names down? I saw two of y'all. Check it out. How many of y'all followed through with the information that Bethany Jones has presented, how many times? What I believe is, I'm beginning to understand why after two years we're in the same place. Do you know my name? I hope and pray that this board doesn't live to regret not being open to all the information as it is for the sake of our children's future. Thank you.
Billy Cuts?
Before I have my little thing I'd like to share is, could I ask a couple of questions about every student every day, or is that gonna be part of my time? I don't...
It's pretty time.
I don't, I just wanted to, but...
You're welcome to email us at any time.
Well, I just was hoping that the... There were some things that came up that I think would be kind of important that everybody gets to, with or at least have a part of that.
Yeah.
Maybe I'll try to put it into here, maybe that'll help.
We, we, we'll just say we haven't even started your time yet, so, you know. Start right now.
Thank you. So I'm gonna try to talk fast, but I have three minutes. Since the board's special meeting a couple of weeks ago, I've had several things running through my mind. Been a part of multiple conversations and several concerns shared with me. I spent last week parting all these thoughts and conversations of what to do. My resolution was to come here tonight, express my concerns as a parent, go to the board for some changes, and to say what we're, to say we're all accountable for every child in our community. I have a huge affinity for teachers, and every time I come here, I get emotionless. I apologize, and I try not to, but it seems to work against my favor. That affinity reaches out to our teachers, our administrators, and all the amazing staff that we have. I'm hugely concerned over the last several years, the overwhelmingness that's fell upon them. Some of it's outside of their control, some of it's been brought on by different things others have brought up, and some of it's been brought on by the board. Some of them are why we still have our kids in public schools, and I'll say that for a personal fact. There are some amazing people out there, and I keep putting my kids in public school because I want my kids to have them. Without those certain individuals, my family, like many more, would be looking for alternative means of education. If we keep losing teachers and staff, not supporting those individuals, or allowing some teachers to use their classroom as a personal agenda platform, the school district may start losing students, and I heard on finances, it's a huge component. We have to take into consideration that the teachers and staff are vital in retaining students. If you don't start looking at what their needs are and how we can help them, students don't matter anymore. As a board, a community, a family, we need to come together and support these teachers making positive impacts on our kids. We need not to burden them, sorry, we need to unburden them, let them teach without overwhelming them, and allow equal and equitable discipline to occur without fear, to go against the current norm and cultivate minds that use openness, creativity, and critical thinking. I propose that we speak to these teachers and administrators and ask them what we can do to help them. Don't assume we know what they need, ask them what they need. The more positive impact teachers we have, the more our kids will thrive. As for the kids, we should be concerned. Yes, there's a lot going on with COVID, we should be concerned, that's a whole different topic for me, but what I'm most concerned about, and we've ignored it, and we let it get out of hand, the use of fake products, drugs, alcohol use, mental health. To me, those in our current times are the four biggest things we need to be concerned about. When and how will this school board approach these concerns? When elementary students...
Can you wrap up there, these ten seconds? That, that is your three minutes. I appreciate your passion and...
Really?
I'll donate my time to him.
No, we...
They don't do that in my dress, they don't want us to...
We don't do that.
So we can summarize that, if that's how we wanna play it, let me ask this, finish this up.
We're gonna play by the rules...
No, and, and I appreciate that, and I'm gonna stay with it.
And I appreciate that.
As a school board, I'm glad that our district obtained an avid grant for continuing education and growth for our teachers. That's a great thing that we went out for. What I was not happy is when I learned that the board approved a custom position for the former superintendent husband for ninety thousand dollars a year to oversee that grant. So while we got a grant to help these men and women cultivate my children, their children, our community's children, why did the board approve a position for ninety thousand that didn't need to be approved when that money could have been used somewhere else? I appreciate you and thank you for your time.
Dale Smith?
Dale Smith, four seventy-nine, I was right. So I just have a couple of things, and it just came up. Who made the rule that, because we used to be able to donate our time, and I know you have thirty minutes, but if it takes forty, or fifty, or a hundred because of things that we, the people, think are wrong, who, who made that rule that it's thirty minutes, and who made that rule that we can't donate our time? Does anyone know that, or is that him and she's gone?
No, the policy for the school board, I was answering, it's called, policy for the school board has been thirty minutes for decades.
I can live with that one, but what about, because it used to be we donate our time, and then somebody in this group, or somebody's, go, "No, we're not gonna allow that anymore." And I'd like to know why that is.
Right, no, we can answer that via email, but we, we modified the policy, because we think, hearing from one person at a time...
Yeah, so at the next meeting, I'll be here, I would like that answered, in fact, will that give you the answer?
We, we modified the policy collectively as a board, to say that you can't hand off your time.
But why, when we used to do it?
Because we want to hear...
What I, what I see is when you do that is you are, you are putting the thumb on us going, "We don't want them to talk, maybe I know."
So I'll let you have your three minutes now, but the reason was because we want to hear from more voices? We don't want ten people to donate their time if one person...
But we want to hear their voice.
We want to hear from more voices, and so that's how, that's how we decide. So you're, so appreciate it, Mr. Smithy, your three minutes is...
Then another thing that happened is...
Your three minutes is on. Sorry?
Restart it.
Yeah, restart it, because I was answering your question.
One, one more last thing, is that young lady back there, I heard her say twice, maybe three times, "She needs help." Is this the board that can help get her some help for what she does? Because I was pretty impressed with what she's doing, or is there no money in the budget? And by the way, thank you for what you did, and then I know that you just got that job, but Laura, I expect the next time we come, you'll have the COVID-19 information that I asked you up there.
Nice. Nicole Reed?
Um, Nicole Reed, Hudson Rick is my little boy that was standing up here. Um, I actually didn't have anything prepared before I came, but thank you for the two hours you gave me to do that. I think personally that we landed the best bus driver we could after my little boy, and the best kindergarten teacher we could have asked for. I'm very emotional right now, because when we started, and I'm sure I'm gonna get deducted for crying, so go ahead, um, when we started this school year, I had a newborn that was in the NICU for RSV, and she almost lost her life. Levon picked up my little boy every day and brought him home every day, and with much care, and she took care of him and made sure he got to where he needed to. She cared deeply, and that is rare. And I'm so sad, I had no idea that she was gonna do that today, and that breaks my heart, that she had to do that. It breaks my heart that she doesn't have a voice to say, "I would like to drive this bus without a mask on my face and not force it on these children." I'm glad that my little boy was able to be in here and stand up for what is right. I didn't think that he'd have to stand for justice at five years old. And for that, I'm sad that he has to do that. I looked into some things considering the, um, ESSR funds, and if that is what we are getting funding from, I'm not sure that you are, but if it is, one of the requirements is that if someone does not comply, remove them from the bus, from transportation. And I do not like that because of the fear that would instill on the children. I remember whenever I first decided I'm not gonna wear a mask in City Market, how fearful I was, the confrontation that might come, and how much more it might be for children if they have to worry about that. I'm not gonna let that happen. If it even means I need to take my little boy out of school, because I have four small children, four months old, two years old, I'd bring her, you're welcome, uh, four years old and five. Okay, so Levon is blessing me tremendously. If it was more, I may not have been able to touch this school with our situation. And so I don't want to see our kids intimidated for not wearing their mask. And so City Falls, uh, in football stadiums, they're all fully masked, and we're all sitting here, fully, sorry, unmasked, and we're all sitting here fully unmasked, why does my child have to get on a bus masked? I want to know the answer, and I do, I want to sit back and wait for it. I would like that answer, please. Thank you.
I worry we have time.
She didn't start the clock, didn't I?
Okay, nineteen, I reckon it's first.
Eighteen, nineteen, so it's forty-one now, so we are twenty-two minutes.
So we have time for two more speakers.
So we have Roger Sanchez?
I'll be on with this way. I... I was, I don't know, there's, there's a lot of things going on in my head regarding the San Juan Basin Public Health, Junior Heroes Project. It is very concerning to me that Adam, that you haven't reached out to San Juan Basin Public Health, that nothing has gone anywhere, and this just, just kind of upset me as well. There should be no reason that he should go to you first. What he did, in my opinion, made us aware of what was going on. If he had gone to you first, would we have known about it? I don't think so, um, that's just my opinion, though. I did find out with Pagosa Springs Mayor candidate Sarah Cole, both her and I researched who was actually here during that time. It is a person named Stephen Eaton, he's a COVID-19 Equity Outreach Coordinator, and... and also Sandra Lane, a COVID-19 Equity Outreach Coordinator. And I think their manager is Sarah Cancello-Bury, says here, she's a COVID-19 Outreach Project Program Manager. It does need to be looked into. You have the information now of who they are. There needs to be some accountability. We don't know what could have happened. That vandalism, a child being kidnapped, anything could have happened with that little hook there. I have been in IT, I've been in the IT field for roughly maybe a little bit less than twenty years. A good part of that was as an IT manager. I learned to take accountability and not have an ego about things that, that I did wrong or that I got wrong. I'm not perfect. My teammates aren't perfect, but I take ownership when something goes wrong. I didn't see ownership happen here today. I see it deflecting. And we need answers. Research twenty-two US Code seventy-one oh four. It requires you to prevent what had happened by those people walking in from happening in the first place. Just one last thing. I recommend this team to purchase microphones for each board member. It's very difficult to hear a lot of you talk very low. I found some on Amazon, cheap brand pile. It got good reviews, three hundred dollars for like eight microphones and a good system. So I can help you set it up. I'm trying to get out of IT, but some keeps pulling me back. Thank you for your time. I do feel like everybody is trying their hardest on everything, but again, this is a huge oversight. I have to point the finger somewhere.
Wayne Bryan? He actually had leave, so he's not here.
Okay.
So one more that wanted to speak.
Yeah, could I say something? I know I'm on the list.
Go ahead. We got time, one more. Wayne.
I would recommend you guys have an opportunity to shine for our community. Get that bus driver back. Do what you can. Get him back. And that's all I have to say.
If I can say something else. I want to say it, it was shocking tonight that the bus drivers like her seem to be the ones who care the most and have connections with the community. She, you know, brought some kiddos from the school district that she obviously has built a relationship with and that they trust and she cares for them. The bus drivers that we need are the ones who care for the children and they take the trust. So I just, it was really hard for me tonight to see her because she wouldn't be doing her job if she didn't care about the kids. And it was really upsetting for me to see the way that she had to leave because we don't want to see that, especially right now with my social hand. We're trying to get bus drivers. We're trying to get substitute teachers. We don't need any more staff, especially with those.
We could sit in a room like this without a mask for over two hours. The kids on the short bus ride.
Appreciate your comment. I know that she's an excellent bus driver.
So I don't know if she would want her position anymore or if you guys would be willing to give it to her, but we can use her.
Oh, absolutely.
We can use her.
Absolutely. So we are, we are done with public on it. We appreciate you hanging in there. We thought you might want to see some of the board work that we do. I didn't get that feeling. Take that feedback.
Not when we can't hear you. It doesn't do us any good whatsoever.
Okay, so we're going to, we're going to take a break here for a little over five minutes at five to nine. We, you don't have to stay. We have quite a few more things we have to get done.
What did you just do different that now you're kind of, we can hear you better?
No, I have, we have, we have these mics.
I know, but you haven't been using it. This is the first time I've heard.
See, it's off now and it's on. So I picked up my voice. I'm not sure why.
Mr. President, I emailed you. You didn't respond to that. You don't respond to emails.
Thank you. And we're back in session. Bye, Joe. Thank you all. Everybody.